I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here. Nate Bobby, roll call, please.
Jessica Mead, here. Andy Mary?
Yes.
Noel Deeb? Mary Newfeld?
Yes, here.
Danny Pyatt?
Here.
Danielle Youska? J.D. Schrader?
Here.
Jeanie Long?
Here.
And Mike Foley?
Here. All righty. We do have a quorum, so it is a legal meeting. So we will go on to the consent agenda. So if you look for motion, please.
I move the board approve the minutes of the February 20th, 2019 special meeting, February 26th, 2019 expulsion hearing meeting, February 26th, 2019 regular Board of Education meeting, financial report for February 2019, consideration of current bills, checks number 9757 through 9839, in the amount of $265,000, return $21.37. ACH is number 181900030 through 181901056, in the amount of $836,639.49, and one more transfer in the amount of $18,396.19, or a total of $1,120,857.5.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have motion, but I am in need. Second by Ms. Long. Any questions, comments on the minutes of the meetings, on the balances and the financial reports?
I had a question about on the payment card, the charge for STEAM education for professional consult for STEAM adoption.
So Jeff Newfeld contacted, now I won't remember her name. She's considered like the STEAM founder, a female from another state. I apologize, I can't remember her name. And we had a face-to-face over...
Skype?
Live chat, Skype, yes, thank you. And just talked to her about our program. As it turns out, she is about 10 years down the road of our start. So it was a worthwhile conversation, but I do not see us using her in the future. But he arranged that.
Okay, are we gonna be hearing about STEAM any time soon?
Yes. Principals, I'm not sure when you'll hear more, but principals met with Jeff and he is scheduled to come back to our admin council meeting in April. And he's been vetting different STEAM lessons, if you will, so that we can select a vendor, select some lessons, K5, and have those ready for the fall.
Do we have an update on when we're gonna get the FabLab open to the public? We were getting some feedback that was...
I'm actually going to defer to Tim or Clint. We talked about this recently.
We have, Dave has an action plan ready, and I said, "Well, let's roll with it. The funds are there. We just have to get some personnel to stack it."
Do we have the personnel already? Or do we need to find someone who've been coming after school essentially?
I don't know if it can be a non-district employee.
In terms of the grant money from the donor? Or in terms of...
In terms of our ability.
Oh, supervision, supervision once somebody else is in there?
Yeah.
Why would that be any different than a non-district coach?
Yeah, same thing.
It would be the same thing.
Yeah, we would, you know, do the background checks and that.
Yeah.
So at this point, conversations that we've had with Mr. Coors, we've had to agree on a curriculum rate for supervision. And...
What is that curriculum rate?
$16.
I was gonna say, there's probably some really great people that you could get out of the public to come in and do that. But I have not $16.
Okay, but so your approximate guess is like in a month? Or in a week, you're gonna?
I will ask Dave and see what his, see what he thinks.
If you will let me know the outcome of that conversation, I'll include it with my Friday note to the board.
All right.
The other thing is, if we got extra money that is wanting to be spent from that grant, is, you know, those cool little robot irons, those Fabco ones? I think they're like $25,000. But get one of those ones like they got at NTC in Wausau. Be a neat thing to have in there.
Okay, just to put that in perspective, JD, right now, we have expended, so there was round one and round two to grant. We've expended all the funds for round one and round two. And the district budget has been expended in FabLab. And now we would be supportive of donations that we've received.
So we have not used the donations we received yet?
We've taken the slight...
But not the whole $50,000 or whatever we got, right?
Correct.
So we need to use that money to fund the staff member?
Correct. Anything else on the financials?
The last bit of the message was, if we ever wanna ask for more money, we gotta spend the stuff we got.
Correct.
I agree. Yeah, something to show.
Yeah.
Anything else? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries, minutes are approved. Assistance delegations. Didn't nobody sign in already? Student representative report. Young Mr. Deep and his father both could not make it tonight, but he did send us all the minutes. And Daniel has graciously agreed to give Nathan's report for him.
Here's the report from Nathan. It says, "Esteemed members of the Board of Education, I am unable to attend this meeting as I am visiting colleges over my spring vacation. Please accept this as the student report for the month of March. Many juniors are taking the opportunity to explore various colleges over their spring vacations. Students participated in the Antigo High School Spring Musical Cinderella the second and third weekends of March. They nearly sold out every show. The students sincerely appreciate the continued support of our community for our student activities." I just wanna add a personal note there. If you didn't see the play, it was really an outstanding play. We enjoyed being there. I know some of us was there the same night I was there. Next, every member of the forensics team advanced from the district competition in Tomahawk to the state competitions. State competitions will take place on April 13 at the University of Wisconsin-Madison. Next, spring sports have begun, but due to the snow, many are unable to participate in games. Indoor track events have had several meets already, and Antigo's doing very well in the Great Northern Conference. The German club is still in Germany until Sunday, March 31st. They left on March 17th and are taking a two-week tour across the country led by Mr. Wanniger. Spanish club has confirmed that their 2020 trip will be to Costa Rica. The trip will take place after school is finished next year, and the club is currently planning fundraisers. Unified School District of Antigo's annual art show was on March 18 and was held at the Antigo Public Library. Great show. The softball team is participating in a tournament in Cocoa Beach, Florida, over their spring break. The boys varsity track team is competing in a GNC meet in Northern Pines tonight. On Monday, March 18, the FFA team took part in the FFA state meeting. The junior prom is on April 27 in the Antigo High School Fieldhouse. The grand march begins at 8:00 p.m. We request the board members, as they are able to attend, and cheer on our students. And last, the state solo and ensemble competition will be at the University of Wisconsin-Stevens Point on May 4. Thank you once again, and I look forward to presenting to you in person at the April 23 Board of Education meeting.
Is forensic an individual sport or a team sport or both?
It's both.
How does that work? Is that like, what do you, you know? Like, what are they talking about in a forensic event?
Forensics has different categories, so...
And you pick.
Stemporaneous speaking, play reading, poetry, choral reading.
Persuasive speech?
Uh-oh.
We need somebody who's...
Did you get a blue ribbon, Tim?
Four-minute speech.
And your speech was? I can't remember.
It was that good. Yeah.
I'll get to on this one. I did four-minute speech. And when I was a junior, I went to state, and it was on manufacture of defective parts in dolls.
In dolls?
Yes. Of all things, this is what my coach had me doing. And it worked, because I got a blue stapler. So it works. That's why, defective parts. Anyway.
I never knew you had interested dolls with my...
I didn't, it was just what his speech was. Bronte? I have good peripheral vision too. Now that we've got your bit on it. Any other questions or comments on the student report?
Danny, thank you for reading that tonight. All righty. Look forward to young Mr. Deep being here the end of next month to get his report. So let's go to new business, committee of the whole. Looking for a motion, please.
I move the board approve the minutes of the committee of the whole meeting on March 12, 2019.
Second.
Okay, motion by Ms. Long, second by Ms. Mead. You've had a chance, the minutes are contained in the board docs. Any questions, comments, changes, corrections, anything?
Clint, when Kelly presented the part about the apprentice, or not the apprenticeships, but the things from NTC, she said you had not, you were surveying students to see which program they would prefer?
Yes.
Are you done doing that yet?
Gas, metal, arc welding.
Metal arc welding, okay.
That's what came, that's what rose to the top.
Okay.
Good to know. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All righty. On to board action. Item A, selection of three new elementary school names.
So we had three committees meet, one for each city elementary school. And they were comprised of parents, staff, principals, students. And I had the honor of sitting in on two of them as just a facilitator, not a participant. So I've shared with you the top two or three results. Interestingly enough, the top, the most popular vote for each of the schools is to keep the name the same. And then a second step was, the committee for each of those schools endorsed that vote as their first choice. Secondly, then, you see for East, the second choice of the committee is Eastwood Elementary. For West, the second choice is Stadium View, followed by Westview Elementary. And for North, Graham Elementary and Springbrook. The others that I listed there, in no particular order, actually, I see I alphabetized them.
Yes, you did.
Are just names that were submitted for one or more of the schools. And what I did not include was that most endearing list from 4K kids with things like Peanut Butter and Jelly School, I Love My School, The Best School Ever, and those kinds of things. And that was a long list, so...
Perhaps we could have Peanut Butter and Jelly Classroom.
No Peanut Butter and classrooms.
That's right.
Yes. But anyway. So then, what you are asked to do this evening is of those two or three choices for each of the schools, select which one you would like to move forward.
Let's say Adam West, Batman.
Adam West was Batman.
All right, because I kept looking at it, thinking, Adam West.
I thought the name Red Robin was kinda cute too.
Yes.
I still gonna make a motion to keep the three elementary school names the same.
Yeah, I'll, yeah, I second that.
It's cool, I think I have some of them are neat names.
Okay.
Can we have the motion?
Right off of here?
Well, I'd like to see all of it in maroon, the primary colors. Would that be an option too?
And the Red Robin mascot.
Sure, we could add that.
Do you want that in there, JD?
Yeah, I was that smart. Good job, guys.
So motion is from J.D. Schrader and seconded by Jeanie Long to retain the current names of the three elementary schools in town as East, West, and North. And that we have the Red Robin mascot at all elementary schools with maroon as the primary color. So I'm all right.
Thank you for that. And I think it was still a good opportunity to engage the community. And there were some lovely ideas. And so it's... Well, and what I like, though, is some of the remarks, you know, even if we do rename them, I will still have to say, "Well, it's the one on the north and downtown," that kind of thing. So it does make sense to keep them the same. And I feel...
It'd be a little funny if we reversed West and East.
It might be, yes. But I feel good about engaging the community with anyone who had an opportunity, being heard, yes.
That was a really nice suggestion.
Yes.
So we're approving the Red Robin mascot and the official color as maroon?
Yes.
All right, he was giving me a hard time that we'd have to buy all new jerseys if we changed the names and we were gonna waste so much money if we did that.
So we talked about that, actually, JD. And our elementary schools only going through grade three, there is no competition. So if there are any jerseys, they'll be shipped to the middle school for grades four and five if they, you know, compete against each other. And at that age, they're reversible. One's maroon, the other's white anyway. So we did think about that, and it would have turned out to be a non-factor.
How were, how long were each of the meetings?
Probably an hour or less.
So those people won't be mad at us?
Oh, heaven's sake. And again, at each of the committee meetings, the top choice was to stay the same.
Okay. Any additional discussion on the elementary school names and the mascot?
I just wanna add in that the plan is to repaint the buildings to reflect the colors, because I know that we have a lot of, like, I think North has a dragon painted on the wall and things like that. It's not in the budget this year, so we're gonna have to live with the colors for a more year. But that will be the direction going forward is match the colors that are here at Tyson.
It's a goal. And maybe we can enlist the art department.
They got West, and I painted it.
Paint the mascots on the wall or something as part of our project.
Yeah, and actually, next time you're in the middle school, you should look, Amy has had a few students that have done some small murals and stuff primarily towards the old gym. And they look very, very nice.
Yes.
We'll look to follow that direction going forward.
Yeah, they've done a great job painting those.
Excellent. Okay, any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. We have retained our elementary names. HVAC at the middle school. Let's do a motion.
I move the board accept the bid from Price Equipment in the amount of $14,400 for the purchase of the HVAC system for the Antigo Middle School.
Second.
Okay, so these are just a couple small FanCo units that are in the four classrooms that are going to be, they're getting the asbestos abated rate now. And then they will be refinished, some that we had to take walls out, making the classroom space. So it's only handful of units, but it passed the $10,000 mark, so.
That's all except on the first floor, I mean?
And a smaller area on the second floor. But primarily on the first, yes.
Any questions, further discussion? Bobby, this one's gonna be roll call since we're spending.
Andy Mary?
Yeah.
Mary Newfeld?
Yes.
Danny Pyatt?
Yes.
J.D. Schrader?
Yes.
Jeanie Long?
Yes.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
And Mike Foley?
Yep. Motion carries. All righty. Item C, CISA 9 contract.
I move the board approve the CISA 9 shared services contract for the 2019-2020 school year.
Second. Okay, motion by Ms. Mead, second by Ms. Pyatt. Any discussion? We talked about this at committee of the whole. In depth, I think, pretty much so. Any questions beyond what we discussed there? No? Bobby, once again, roll call, please.
Mary Newfeld?
Yes.
Danny Pyatt?
Yes.
J.D. Schrader?
Yes.
Jeanie Long?
Yes.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
Andy Mary?
Yeah.
And Mike Foley?
Okay. Item D, social media EDU contract. Looking for motion, please.
I move the board approve the social media EDU contract for the period of July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2022, in the amount of $7,000, three years at $9,000 each.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, motion by Ms. Mead, second by Ms. Long. Once again, we discussed this on a committee of the whole. The reason for the three-year contract, it does save us a little bit of money. Ours is $10,000 a year, and the three-year just gets us a discount. So, and they do a wonderful job for us. Any questions, comments, discussion? Bobby, once again.
Danny Pyatt?
Yes.
J.D. Schrader?
Yes.
Jeanie Long?
Yes.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
Andy Mary? Mary Newfeld?
Yes.
And Mike Foley?
Yes.
All righty. Good, thank you, everyone. Start College Now program.
Yes. So we've got three students who are signed up to do the Start College Now, which was previously titled Youth Options for next fall. Those three students wish to take a CNA class, an EMT class, and a statistics class, none of which are offered here at the high school. We had four students last fall in that, in Start College or Youth Options, not Start College Now. We've had some discussion on how to promote a little bit of that, because I know that's one question that the board had asked at a previous meeting. And we run into our counseling department, and I actually announced it a couple times the week before in the mornings. I'll go in and either give them some words of wisdom, advice, give them a joke, or fill in some different things of upcoming events that they need to know about, so.
So we're not taking any action on that tonight?
I think we are, we're asking for approval for the three students to take the CNA, EMT, and statistics classes.
Okay, that'll be looking pretty much. We'll move.
Second.
Is that you here?
Thank you.
Okay, motion by Mr. Pyatt, second by Ms. Newfeld to approve the three students for the Start College Now program for next fall.
And I just wanna throw out Mrs. Krebs and Mrs. LeBecq for their work on trying to boost up the Start College Now, because that is something that they talk to a lot of students about. And I really wish more students would take advantage of some of that.
Yeah, good. Thanks, Clint. Any questions, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Item M, medical advisor agreement. Motion, please.
I move the board approve Dr. Patrick McKenna as the medical advisor for Unified School District of Antigo.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Pyatt, second by Ms. Long. Any discussion? I know this is a, this is an unpaid position, correct? I know Patrick did a fine job.
Right, he's just presuming it's all position.
Pretty much, yeah. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Dr. McKenna will serve as our medical advisor. Item G, overnight trips. Looks like we've got three of them.
I move the board approve the itinerary, overnight trips for boys softball, forensic team, and I guess student council leadership? That didn't really give up information about.
It just says it's...
It was added later. It's April 28th and 9th in grade B. I noticed that too, so.
But it was overnight, okay.
Yep.
I'll second that. Thank you.
I just wonder if we should change this policy back so we don't have to approve these?
I can already get going.
Who would approve them?
Julie?
She's busy.
Well, and in this regard, JD...
We're just approving them later anyways.
Yeah, it's basically... To me, it's basically advising the board that they're taking trips, because people are gonna come up and ask, "Well, why are these kids taking all these trips this way?"
And there's more in the spring.
There's more.
Yeah, that's why we have them the last couple meetings.
Okay, any further discussion on these? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the trips, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. All righty. Item H, Krebs Park Agreement. Motion, please.
I move the board approve the agreement between Antigo dugout club and the USDA regarding the use and upkeep of the Krebs brothers' home Royal Park for the 2019 through 2021 high school baseball season.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Okay, motion by Ms. Mead, second by Ms. Long. Discussion.
Okay. The last line where it says, "This agreement is in effect for item 1 approximately April 1st to October 1st." Okay, I very, it was, I didn't have enough time. It was after 5:00, when I tried to find out about these, these groups, the gridiron and the blue line and all of these, all of these organizations we have that we used to call Booster Clubs. And they're part of this Antigo Recreation Foundation. I would like to maybe find out more about that. My question was, first of all, when I spoke to this person, I said, they said, "Well, the season's over." Like when school's out or shortly after school's out. And I said, "But the line says we're maintaining the park April 1st to October 1st." And I knew, because I can be walking and there's always somebody, and I know all the guys that are mowing the lawn, and it's no, you know, in the evening or in the morning, and it's not district. I think that line needs to either be changed or taken out. I don't know.
What, you're saying it's not the district mowing the lawn?
No, not after school is out. It's Dean Niskoviac, Mark Niskoviac, Scott Farmer, whoever rides the lawnmower, there's... I don't know why the district would have to maintain it when our program is done.
Mary, it's a partnership between the district and the dugout club. So we're responsible, I mean, they have infield lines. But our equipment's so big, they don't do anything on the infield. So they primarily will come down there when they're heading over to north or in between.
But what about all these other guys I see mowing the lawn during the summer?
They're doing the infield, probably?
No.
The actual infield?
No, they've got a yellow and black Cub Cadet riding lawnmower that they ride.
We have been doing this for probably at least 10 years.
We must not be doing a good enough job, because they must be redoing it. I don't know. It just seems like, and I, and I get the agreement, but it just seems like when our season, when we're done using it, do we need to continue to maintain it? I don't know.
You can look upon that as they're, I mean, it's not our park, correct?
No, it's not our park.
Is it a city park or?
No, the dugout club owns the park.
The dugout club owns it, and so you could look upon it as they're saying, here's the rent you gotta pay, you gotta mow it all season.
Okay.
So is the dugout club is not the equivalent of the gridiron club, say?
Yes, they are.
So it is the equivalent of it?
Yes.
So it's not, it's, I mean, does it do Little League and stuff, too?
No, the city.
Is it a booster club for Little League? In most things?
They start, I think it's the Stallions.
Right.
I don't think Little League is, Little League is city, belongs to the city, I think.
Okay.
And then the Little League park uses, the Little League team uses the Little League park. And that's city.
So the dugout club doesn't do anything for them?
Dugout, the dugout group is just the Krebs Park. I mean, they might use the other, like when they have a tournament, they use all the other parks. When they have their weekend tournaments, they play on every park in town.
Mary, do you know if the additions, proposed additions in lighting for Little League Park, was that put up by the city or was that put up by the dugout club?
I don't know, I remember seeing Sarah down there, I remember seeing Sarah down there with some people talking about the lights before they put them in, so I don't know who put those lights up.
I know the proposed changes.
But they put in the batting, they put in the batting cage.
Yeah, so I, I don't know, I mean, I know it's owned by the city, but I don't know the, the.
But the city maintains, city maintains that. Okay, whatever.
As a district, though, we also, or if I remember correctly, for girls softball, now use Little League Park.
Yes, they do. And Saratoga, if they need it. And Lake Park.
Yeah.
But we don't do anything to those fields?
No, city maintains those.
And owns them.
And owns them.
Does this group have to pay property taxes, then, on the baseball field?
Well, all of these are, are part of a 501(c)(3).
They don't, because it's nonprofit organizations.
Property taxes, though, I mean.
I know that they're.
If they're a 501(c)(3), they don't have to pay profit taxes, even if they're exempt.
Yeah. Well, the other thing is. Is that what a church technically is?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I didn't know if that was a religious exemption, for churches specific to.
And I can speak to some of the maintenance that goes on at Krebs Park, considering I live across the street. And there's guys down there mowing lawn all the time, yes, but it's guys from different baseball organizations that are getting the field ready for their particular games. So for this, I don't see this being a real problem, because for eight hundred dollars for the entire season, and we're not supplying, other than mowing it, we're not supplying any of the diamond dirt or any of that kind of stuff that's there, which I know is very expensive. So I think, from my opinion, this is probably not a very bad expense for what we do there. But where do we go after 2021? I mean, because it's going up, we're paying to mow this all summer long till growing season's done, plus in addition to that, we're giving the Antigo dugout an additional eight hundred dollars this year, nine hundred next year, a thousand the next year. Is it going to be eleven hundred, twelve hundred, is that, is that where we're going with this, or?
I, I don't know.
Do we do the same thing for, if this is equal to the gridiron club, do we give eight hundred dollars a year to the gridiron club? Do we give eight hundred dollars a year to the hockey organization?
Basketball, volleyball, BM?
That's one way of looking at it, but the other way of looking at it is, all of those people give us money. And if they choose to say, "Well, we just can't do this anymore, we're not going to give you as much as we gave you last year," I, I don't see the weakened demand that they do.
No. You know, when you think about our whole athletic program, you know, it's, for, for a majority of our student body, they're participating in it, and whether it's tennis or soccer, you know, we're maintaining the school field for track. You know, our fertilizer bill is probably eight to ten thousand dollars a year. And then we have to water it, and then we have to cut it. So we're not paying for any fertilizer, we're not paying for any water. You know, it's, I look at it as a partnership between our baseball program and the district. When they, they approached me on adding line five, I was asking them what were they looking for? And they were looking for us to be willing to buy materials for them. And I didn't think we wanted to add that burden to Jake or to Jeff Ulmer. And I proposed this reasonable increase. And when we look at what we're paying the city, our city rental rate, even though we do not mow, is about double this. And then when you start looking for things like at hockey, I mean, hockey is significantly more expensive, because it's, it's that much more expensive to opt. But if we start giving the Antigo dugout club money for their organization in addition to mowing, do you think the other organization would say, "Okay, where's our funding, too?" I don't know, I just, just discussion here. You know, I think of, you know, Danny, if you think of that in an argument, we have a 25,000 square foot field house that we're supporting volleyball and basketball, and we heat and maintain it outside the school day specifically for those activities. You know, think of the, I, I, I'm aware it ends, it's mingled in between, and it's, it's one of the expenses of having a community and a school sports program.
All of these clubs are very generous, and to me, it highlights the fact that we're a little short on money. You know, and on the one hand, the school should be, you know, buying things like basketballs and uniforms, but we don't. And so it's, it's a way that we have these programs, even though we're short of money. So I think if we got to start paying a little more, you know.
To each.
No, if, I think we got to let each of these clubs decide what they want to donate, and if, you know, some club says, "Well, we don't want to pay for that anymore, because baseball's not paying for it anymore." Well, so be it, we're either going to run a referendum and get some money, or we're going to start cutting programs. And, but I don't, I don't think we're going to cut baseball over a thousand dollars. I mean, it's, you know, maybe it's the beginning of highlighting our financial problems.
Could be, could very be.
And I agree that all of these, all of these clubs, there wouldn't be the sports without these clubs and the parents raising the money, but I just was wondering about this maintaining, and I'm going to keep track this summer, who's mowing that lawn down there.
And to that, Mary, I know that, wouldn't we mow our lawn at our place? When I mow it, I make, I do a quick job of it, if somebody wants it to look good, they come back and redo it.
And you don't do it, yeah.
All righty. I think we've.
Okay.
Add that one about enough.
Just like mowing the lawn, Mary, you know, maybe it's just a pleasure thing.
I do love it.
Okay, let's, let's get back on track here, folks. So then the motion is to approve the agreement between the dugout club and the school district regarding the upkeep of Krebs Memorial Park from 2019 to 2021 high school baseball season. Any further discussion on the motion? We're spending money, Bobby, let's do roll call.
J.D. Schrader?
Yes.
Jeanne Long?
Yes.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
Andy Mary?
Yeah.
Mary Newfeld?
Yes.
Danny Pyatt?
Yes.
And Mike Boldy?
Yep.
All righty, thank you, everyone. Item I, Girls Cooperative Hockey Team for 2019-2020. Motion, please.
I move the board to approve the request for renewal to the girls cooperative hockey team for the 2019-20 school year.
Second.
You got me. Motion by Mr. Pyatt, second by Ms. Mead. You've had a chance to review the information from Tom Schofield regarding the co-op.
And in his absence this evening, he's, do you have information, Clint?
Yep, I just know that it's including Lakeland, Tom, Duncan Mercer, in that girls co-op, it's still going to be Northern Edge, it's still going to be Rhinelander, it's the whole school, and he is looking for action, as you were stating, and we need a signature from Mr. Boldy.
And how does the cost in this get split up, and say, Antigo's got 10 girls and Rhinelander's got five? Well, how many, what is the percentage of students read school?
I think we had five in this year, I believe. I, I don't know how the cost is split up. I know that, you know, we've got to travel and everything, but that's not any cost to the district.
Do they, they practice at different schools, different weeks or something?
Yeah.
In Rhinelander one week and in Antigo the next, and the girls just drive it?
Yep, they drive it, and, but it, there is no, there's no cost to the district as far as the girls hockey goes, you know, they fundraise for.
Oh, okay.
And yeah, make a slight correction. We, this year with the athletic budget, we did add funds for hockey, swimming, marching band, and choir. So we have, within the athletic budget, there's five thousand dollars for the girls' hockey program. To my knowledge, and I could be.
Girls and boys or just girls?
Just girls. So that pays for, I believe, this year, Antigo has an assistant coach for the, for the co-op, so we provide that coach. And then we require that the transportation, they use a van from Allianz.
For practice, too?
For practice. So they are renting a van to go to and from Antigo.
With the driver.
And we help support, the driver is the coach or parent, so it's people that have been there. And we help share that cost, so that's what the five thousand dollars costs. That's a great liability issue to pick that up, the transportation.
And the actual contract that Rhinelander sent to us late this afternoon for Mike's signature says, "Games will be split with Lakeland, Antigo, Rhinelander. Schools pay expenses for home games, most practices will be in Rhinelander. Uniform costs are determined by each school for jerseys, and each school follows its own activity school."
That's sort of interesting, when they band them up together like that, you make friends that you would not make otherwise.
And it provides an opportunity that wouldn't double our expense there.
They, the DC, the boys, younger kids, like the Bantams or the Peewees, were having to do this DC Everest, just they didn't have enough guys.
Did we always have Tomahawk and, I mean, Mercer and Mobino, were they always part of our?
It used to start out, it was just Antigo.
Antigo, Rhinelander, wasn't it?
And then I think Lakeland, Mercer, and Three Lakes were their own at one point, and their numbers dwindled down to the point of.
Not being able to field a team.
This was enough, this was enough to, look, we've got six schools here, one, two, three, seven, eight schools listed, to.
And it's giving them an opportunity.
Get enough kids to form a team, to be competitive.
They would have had like 12 girls if it was not including these, so again, there's, there's room on that beat.
That's the best thing about hockey, is you switch players every minute, so lots of people get to play, it's not like basketball where you.
All righty, any more discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries, we've got a co-op hockey for the girls. All righty. Item G, Boys Cooperative Swim Team for 2019-2020.
I move the board to approve the request for the Boys Cooperative Swim Team for the 2019-2020 school year.
I'll second.
Motion by Ms. Newfeld, second by Ms. Long. I believe this is, there's a student from Whitewood-Burnwood who wants to compete, and they don't have a team?
Yep, they only have one student that wishes to compete, and Tom's feeling is that he and Farmer are going to be able to push each other in practice and stuff, too, so that should be a good partnership.
Any discussion on this one? Like, what we're doing there is we're doing similar to what we do for Whitelane softball. When they have students that participate, we charge a flat rate based on prior year expenses, and divided by the participants. So last year, I think we had five or six boys out for boys swim, and we just divide that cost around, what does that mean? Really?
I forgot to silence it today.
Yeah.
Shame on me.
You forgot that announcement.
You forgot the announcement.
I forgot the announcement. Shame on me.
See when you don't do it?
Yep.
So they, they would share it with what was on their, yeah, afterwards. Because it's for sure.
It's not always duck, yeah.
No. Tim, thank you for that explanation. Although we got the quacks and the ducks off.
Any further discussion? Any one of those mighty elementary schools Mighty Ducks?
Yes. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All righty, item K, New Hires.
Please, will you put that in the paper, four names, elementary school Mighty Ducks, and then put just kidding, like in the first, in the first sentence?
Don't do it.
It's almost, it's almost April Fool's, if you'll just hold this story tight.
All righty, let us, let us go on to item K, New Hires. Be looking for a motion, please.
I move the board to approve the hiring of Patricia Cordis, specialization at Antigo High School, beginning February 27th of 2019.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Mead, second by Mr. Pyatt. Uh, looks like Ms. Cordis has already started.
Yep.
Did she just start a school, Julie, or is she?
No.
No, she's.
No.
Oh, okay.
No, go ahead, Julie, you know her.
I actually have the privilege of working with her in Wausau years ago, and she moved out of state, retired, and moved back in state with her husband, who's retired, but this, Wisconsin is their home, and she wanted to be around kids, she's a great educator, and we were thrilled. Heidi said, "Do you recognize this name?" Because she has Wausau, you know, resume. So do they live here?
Yep, they're either building or they're buying a house, either, I think, in Antigo School District, actually, because they have family in Whitelane and they have family in Wausau, so we want to.
That's great. So we are thrilled.
Good deal.
Excellent.
And she's just great, and super excited.
Yeah, we're very much honored.
Good news. All righty, any other questions on that one? Hearing none, all those in favor of the new hire, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Resignations.
I move the board to accept the resignations of Wendy Simona, Special Education Coordinator, effective June 30th, 2019. Samantha Nicholson, Special Education Instructional Assistant at the middle school, effective March 22nd, 2019. And retirements for Corinne Walter, Elementary Teacher at Spring Valley, Scott Hendrickson, Elementary Teacher at Pleasant View, and Deb Kautza, Elementary Teacher at Pleasant View, all effective June 30th, 2019. And that's a loss. All three of them are a loss.
I just wanted, oh, sorry, Scott Hendrickson was my fourth grade teacher, he was excellent.
Thirty-seven years.
I remember building rockets.
Thirty-seven years.
We played soccer.
Motion for Mary, second for J.D.
Yeah.
All righty. Yeah, we're going to miss all of them, and let's face it, it's just getting to be the situation, so. Any discussion on any of these? We're old.
I would just like to echo Mary and J.D.'s and the other sentiments, tremendous educators, and we're very fortunate to have them have spent so many years in our district. We appreciate their service. Right? Thirty-seven, twenty, and I know Corinne's been at Spring Valley eighteen, not sure about any of these. And she was at West, and she was at West for a year, and then she was at North a couple of years, then had her second, her second two kids, and then she took time off and came back, so, so, yeah.
All righty.
With great gratitude.
Yeah, we do appreciate all their years of service, and I know they will be recognized later in the year, I would assume. Yep.
Okay.
Any other discussion on the resignations and retirements?
Should have said this before, I was at swimming lessons the other day for my kid, he came out of the water and cried, so that was ineffective on the first day, but I did hear some parents complaining that they wanted more information on the three elementary school consolidations. They were like, "We're not getting any information," and I was telling them, said, "I swear we get all these information sessions," so obviously they were, hey, we need to have another one of those.
Last Friday, we sent a letter out, that welcome enrollment letter that we discussed with you, that went out last Friday, and at last count, we've had 10 phone calls so far, you know, questioning.
You know, questioning, at least two understood them with the explanation. Some are not as amenable to the idea, and, you know, that's understandable. So, we'll continue to respond to those calls.
It was partly like they were interested in what the class size is gonna be like.
Oh.
Yeah.
And, you know, that, right, and that really isn't changing. I mean, that's the beauty of it. Our enrollment, for the most part, is stable, although, Tim, I think you said at last count, we're down about 40 for next year again.
Well, and really, that's the difference between graduating class and the new class.
Right, so. But they now have that letter, I'm not sure which day you were at lessons, but that's.
Maybe it was last Monday.
Okay, and it does have a date on there to welcome them to their school next year for, you know, a family event, including one at the middle school.
Are we allowing open enrollments at all, or just highly discouraging?
And by that, you mean in district transfers, right? If I'm assigned to North?
Yeah, I talked to some parents in Pleasant View, because Pleasant View got split down the middle.
Right.
Then half of their kids' friends are going to the old school.
Yes, and we're very carefully approaching that we are not endorsing any, because for the first time, it is very exciting to offer equitable services, the same services, at three locations that are in close proximity to each other. So, there is no reason for that. And that's what we're trying to help them. And kids are very resilient, they will make new friends. And if you think about it, it's really only K3 that it affects. Everyone else is together.
Yeah, the person I was talking to, their youngest child would go to 4K at probably West.
And those placements haven't been determined.
Are we gonna have 4K at North? I know we talked about.
We are, we have two teachers now approach us with our offer to teen teach. Very excited about that, and that was just decided. So, now our next step is, we'll sit down and take a look at 4K requests and placements.
Where are we gonna?
Well, we'll have two classes combined in one room, so that frees up two classes with two teachers. And the class still won't be tremendously large, it'll be right around 30, which in many districts is one class. So, we're fortunate. Tell them to call me AV.
I did tell them to call you. They said they'd wait for their license a few weeks ago.
All righty, let us roll back to the motion on the resignations and retirements. Sorry? We've discussed it. Any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Item M, donations.
I move the board approve the following donations. $5,000 from the Community Health Foundation for the Open School Forest. $1,000 from Optimus Club of Ego for full of backpack. $50 from Optimus Club for AHS PBIS. $300 from Optimus Club for AHS softball. $510 from Crest Lumber for AHS athletics. $10,000 from the Ego FFA alumni to the Volcan School Forest. $150 from VOM to AHS Engineering Design Class Car Electric Competition. $250 from Superior Grinding, and $150 from John Gilbert Plumbing, also to the AHS Engineering Design Class. $25,000 from the Alwin Remington Foundation to the Novacan School Forest. $400 from Johnson Electric Coil Company to the AHS Engineering Design Class Car Competition. And $942.90 from Crestwood School PTO Instruments to the Novacan School Forest. And $20,000 to, from the Alwin Remington Foundation to the Aquatic Center Activity Pool, which is a total of $64,000 for $50.80.
Second.
What I was looking for. Motion by Ms. Mead, second from Ms. Newfeld to accept the donations as presented.
How close you get in that school for us?
Yeah, I just want to thank our donors, and I want to give everybody the opportunity, if you haven't had a chance to donate, this is a little reminder, we're getting pretty close. We're at $67,000 to go. So, please help us out, feel free.
I was, I was really impressed with the donation from the Crestwood School. Yeah, and stuff, I thought that was, I thought that was just a.
Whoever thought of it, God bless them.
That would be Sam Lawson, and they, they got a week.
Really? So, that wasn't even them emptying out their CTO money, they had a whole.
See, that's what I thought it was at first, when I saw it. I thought maybe that was what they had left.
That's a lot of pennies.
I think, I think that, that just shows generosity of the district. All of these show the generosity of the district. But that one in particular shows that the students and the parents care. And that's, that's huge. That, it may not be the $67,000 that Tim's looking for. But that's.
We're getting close.
But that is, that's, it's a neat thing to see that happen. And I think that'll, that may in fact inspire other schools to do the same, so.
But are we moving ahead with construction this summer?
We're reworking the design of the floor plan of it. We've had some inputs from the teachers on what we need. And so, that's the basis of it.
What are you putting in the basement?
Pardon?
What are you putting in the basement?
That's part of the redesign. We're not sure if the basement is.
We're, we're exploring options.
But it's a secret.
Yeah, it's not really a secret, we're comparing the single floor to.
Oh, you just said.
The secret, Jessica says underneath, you know. You don't be good old, you know?
I just got some complaints about the basement design, Jessica.
Okay, any further discussion on the donations? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries, and we thank our community once again for their generosity and their thoughtfulness. That concludes tonight's business. The next official board meeting, monthly meeting, will be held April 22nd, 2019, in this room.
On Sunday.
On Monday, we will start at 5:30 for the board reorganization meeting,[1775.02]